Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
The City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission meeting for November the first, 2012 to order, please. Can I get a roll call of members?
Ann Brinkman.
Present.
Ellen Butnam.
Present.
Monica Duran.
Here.
Tracy Gilner. Dick Matthews.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Steve Tims.
Here.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to treat the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the order of the agenda.
I second the motion.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, call for a vote, please.
I move to approve the minutes of the October 18th, 2012 meeting with a change in paragraph seven. It says the motion passed six oh with Chairman Tims voting no. And I believe it was actually five, five one.
Six to one.
Six to one. Six to one, yes.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, call for a vote, please.
Is it in favor?
This is the time on the agenda for the public forum, a time for any person to speak on any subject that's not appearing on the agenda. And staff seeing, is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak on anything other than the case on Benton Street or on Livwell? Seeing none? Okay, very good. So we do have one public hearing case tonight. Before we start this case, just want to elaborate on the process for what we'll do. We'll introduce the case. Staff will then come up to the podium and give a presentation. The planning commissioners then will direct questions to staff, followed by the applicant will come forward to the podium, state their name and record, or name and address, and present any additional information. Then the planning commissioners will address the applicant and ask them questions. After that, it'll be time for any members of the public to come forward, one at a time, either in favor or in opposition to this request. We do ask that you come into the podium, state your name and address, and please address your comments to the commissioners. After that, we will close the public hearing. There'll be a discussion among the commissioners, and then a motion followed by a vote will occur. I did ask, I would ask that if anyone has a cellphone, just place those on silent or turn those off so that no one will be disturbed. And with that, we'd be glad to have the first case. It's case number WZ-12-09. It's an application filed by NIMDU and Sunreality for a request for approval of a zone change from Planned Residential Development, PRD, to mixed-use neighborhood, MUN. This is for the property located at 3775 Benton Street. So with that, staff, if you're ready.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Sarah Scholwalter, Planner 2 with the Community Development Department in the City of Wheat Ridge. I'm here to give the staff presentation for case WZ-12-09, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Planned Residential Development to mixed-use neighborhood at 3775 Benton Street. I would like to enter into the record the contents of this case file, the zoning ordinance, this digital presentation, and the comprehensive plan. This property is in the City of Wheat Ridge, and all notification requirements have been met, so there is jurisdiction to hear this case. So I wanted to start by showing where the property is located. In this aerial map, it is outlined in blue here. You can also see it pretty well because it's one of the few vacant pieces in the area. This is 38th Avenue up here, and this is Benton Street. The property to the north is bordered by commercial land use here, an auto parts store. There's additional commercial and retail uses along 38th here where the parcel is actually front 38th. To the west of the property, as well as the south and southeast, are residential uses. Immediately to the south are duplex uses, but the area also has some single-family homes. And there is, well, like I already stated directly to the south, there is a duplex there. And as you'll see in the next slide, that property there to the south is zoned R3 or residential three. The zoning in this area is mixed, partially because we're kind of dealing with the transition from a commercial corridor into a residential neighborhood. So the existing zoning today is commercial one or C1 for most of the properties that are on 38th, as well as a few properties in from the corridor. You can see there are a couple of single-family homes that are to the northeast of this property that are zoned commercial one. And then, as I mentioned, there's the R3 zoning to the south. There's also R1B zoning to the west, and then R1A, and some R2, and a little bit of R3. So a little bit of a mixture in this neighborhood. I do want to point out that City Council did just approve a change in zoning for most of the area that's around this property to mixed-use neighborhood. This next slide will show, zooming out a little bit, the site is right here, where those boundaries are. This is Sheridan over here, and the rezoning does go all the way down to Wadsworth. This slide just shows a few blocks over to Fenton. But the zoning, even though Council approved it, it does not go into effect until November. So it'll be November 24th. So at this time, technically, the zoning is still the C1 and the other zone districts that you see on the zoning map. But I did want to point out, you know, the zoning will be in place within a few weeks, and this purple line highlights where the new mixed-use neighborhood zoning will go into effect. One of the criteria that was used was to not include Planned Residential Developments. There were very few of them along the corridor, and the subject property was the only one that didn't have development on it. The other two Planned Residential Developments, you can see one is right here, were built out and had very specific zoning documents that related to the density and allowable buildings on those properties. And so it was a criteria to not include them in the new mixed-use neighborhood. And really, that's the only reason that this property was not included. And the city initiated rezoning that did the rest of this area. Otherwise, it would have met all of the criteria. So now we have some photos of the property. This is looking from Benton Street, looking towards the northwest, so you can see the commercial use that borders the site along 38th Avenue here. The site is just this plain grassy area in between that use and the fence here, and then the two-family home that's south of the site. This is a similar view, but getting a little closer to the site and turned a little bit more towards the west. So you have the subject property here, the fence from the residential property that borders to the south, and again, that commercial use to the north. Now, this is looking at the site from the north back towards the south, so you can see a little better the residential uses to the south. And this is looking from the site across the street, kind of northeast, so you can see the single-family homes that are closest to 38th Avenue, and then the commercial use that's on the southeast corner of 38th and Benton. So the zoning that's on the property today is Planned Residential Development, or PRD. And that zoning went into place in 2007 when there was an applicant who requested a zone change from commercial one to PRD. The Planned Residential Development that was approved only allows for a single-family home. It sets a maximum height of 35 feet, and it sets specific setbacks. The one of note here is for, on the south side of the property where it does border an existing residential use, the required setback is five feet. This document is an illustration from that Planned Residential Development that shows the basic site plan that was approved through that process. So the diagonal shading here represents the basic footprint of the residential use that was proposed, driveway, or concrete use, and then landscaping area here and a five-foot setback from the property to the south. The zoning that's being requested tonight is Mixed Use Neighborhood, or MUN. The applicant has recently purchased the property and would like to develop a residential use that is a little higher density, probably two-family at most, three. Because it's such a small lot, you can't really fit more than that, but would like more options than just a single-family home. So the Mixed Use Neighborhood provides that opportunity. It would allow for residential uses like the applicant wants to do, as well as some commercial uses or a mix of both. It includes architectural standards to ensure quality building design, as well as quality site design. The height limits in the MUN Zone District are 35 feet for any building with a residential use, so it's really the same height limit that's in the existing zoning, the PRD. If there were a commercial use, the building could go up to 50 feet. But there are buffering and setback requirements that basically make that impossible to do on such a small lot. If the zoning is approved before any development can happen, there will have to be a site plan review, which is done administratively, but the applicant has to demonstrate that they conform with all the requirements in the mixed-use zoning, from the architectural standards to the required setbacks and buffering to the adjacent residential property that's there to the south. So as I had mentioned, the applicant's interested in doing residential use, and staff feels comfortable supporting the proposed MUN zoning because the lot is so small, we don't feel commercial use would be viable. So we've done a little analysis to support that. I'll walk through that for a few slides here. The property is quite small. It's a little bit over 6,500 square feet. It's about 50 feet wide, and then the length varies because of the diagonal there on the road, but it's about 135 feet at the north and 125 feet to the south. So these are just really conceptual massing graphics to try and demonstrate what could or could not fit on this site. This, they're not obviously supposed to be building designs, just amassing to understand. This is an example of something that cannot go on the lot, even though theoretically, the zoning would allow for a four-story commercial building. We just wanted to demonstrate how challenging, and in this case, impossible that would be to do, because for a commercial use, you usually want a 14-foot floor-to-floor minimum. In this case, we use 13-foot, which would be really squeezing it in. And even with that, the four-story exceeds the max height limit of 50 feet. Not to mention the fact that in addition to that, if you did a four-story building, you'd have to have a 20-foot setback from the property here, which leaves you only about 30 feet, which is way too narrow for any kind of commercial building, especially if you're going to do more than one story. So basically, there's, just wanted to demonstrate that that four-story commercial option would not work on this lot. Theoretically, the three-story, three-story commercial option could happen in terms of the height limit. You can fit three commercial stories under 50 feet, but it's still basically impossible to do this based on the zoning requirements. One is because you need the 15-foot setback here, and that has to all be landscaped, so you can't use that for access to the lot. There would be no way to gain access. There's no place here to fit a drive to get onto the property. There's also nowhere in this scenario to put parking or stormwater requirements. And even if you lopped this off to just a one-story commercial use, this is very, very narrow. Most people wouldn't pay to build a commercial use that small. It just doesn't, the floor plate doesn't fit. It's not practical. And again, it wouldn't be able to get approved through the site plan and process because there's nowhere to get access onto the lot, and there's not enough room for parking and the required stormwater. So an option that is more feasible that could happen under the zoning is something that would fit under the 35-foot height limit, which for residential uses, because they have a shallower floor-to-floor, you could theoretically fit three stories as a maximum. And if you did a three-story building, then you'd have to have a 15-foot setback. The resulting width is more realistic for residential building, while that's too narrow for commercial. It is a feasible and practical width for residential construction. Again, this is just amassing. It doesn't incorporate all of the requirements in the zoning for articulation, and obviously, if it was residential, probably have more variety into the shape and form. The other thing this doesn't show is where parking would go. The residential use would also be required to have parking, but theoretically, you could probably fit this kind of use and have a portion of the ground floor be a garage for two townhomes, for example. In terms of the process that's come before tonight, there was a neighborhood meeting held on September 18th. There were nine people in attendance, and the questions that were asked in the discussion was largely about what uses would be permitted on the site, what uses the applicant was proposing, and then what setbacks and landscaping would be required under the proposed zoning. Another part of the process is to put the application on referral to outside utility districts and some city agencies such as Public Works. All of the districts and agencies that were notified did not come back with any concerns or comments. In terms of how this zone district and the proposed development for the site would fit in with the city's plans for the area, this is a graphic from our comprehensive plan envisioned Wheat Ridge. It's pretty zoomed out. The site is just kind of a little star right here, but this orange line is Sheridan, the border of Wheat Ridge, and this large red line here denotes 38th Avenue. And you can see here, it says Main Street. In the comprehensive plan, 38th Avenue is called out as a priority redevelopment area for the city, as well as the Main Street for the city. And it specifically calls for promoting small-scale mixed-use infill development. And also, just wanted to note that the site is very close to this red circle here, which represents the Sheridan Community Commercial Center. So it really does have proximity, and is in that transition area where you have a lot of commercial uses on a corridor like 38th transitioning into a neighborhood area. And then, of course, more recently, the city adopted the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan, which was very clear about on the entire corridor, trying to encourage more quality residential development with a focus on medium-density residential to provide more housing opportunities. As many of the commissioners probably remember, the corridor's divided into different sub-districts. All of them are envisioned to be mixed-use. This particular site is within the Sheridan Commercial District, because again, as I mentioned previously, has that proximity to Sheridan and the commercial use is there. But we feel that the proposed zoning, much as the whole corridor was just rezoned to mixed-use neighborhood, really fits the vision that was established in that corridor plan to encourage new development along this priority redevelopment corridor. So in conclusion, staff does support the zone change request. It is supported by our adopted plans, as we just talked about, both the comprehensive plan and the corridor plan. It is compatible with the surrounding uses in that it provides a transition from a commercial zoning to multifamily zoning to the south. It should not have any negative impacts on the public welfare. The site is currently vacant and underutilized, and has been ever since it was rezoned to PRD several years ago. And the change in zoning would likely increase the possibility for development and investment on this lot, and provide a reasonable transition between commercial zoning to the north and two-family residential with multifamily zoning to the south. And that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Now take questions from the commissioners to staff, starting with Commissioner Ohm. Any questions? Commissioner Duran, any questions for staff? Commissioner Brinkman.
Thank you, Sarah. Is the owner of this property the same owner as the Advanced Auto to the north?
No.
So they purchased the property after the subdivision of the...
The current owner purchased the property. The applicant can clarify when, but it was very recently, sometime this...
Okay. So as memory serves, because I was on the Planning Commission that time, the reason the size of this lot is so small is because of the subdivision. It did not occur just naturally. Advanced Auto chose to have an oversized lot for the commercial and leave a very small lot, and the only choice they had really for zoning to be compatible with the neighborhood was Planned Residential Development, correct?
I was not present at the time, but I've read the case file for that case. And my understanding is that, yes, they left a very small lot, but from a staff standpoint, it wasn't that the only option was to do a PRD zoning. It just made sense to have a residential use there.
Okay. So I looked through all the zones, the other zones available, and that lot, if it were R2, which would allow multifamily, the minimum lot size is 12,500. So this is just barely over half of what is the minimum lot size for multifamily. And with multifamily, that allows for a lot of parking. If we presume that this is a two-unit, let's assume every unit has two cars. There's not enough room on the lot for the four cars, so there's going to be parking on the street, which will impact the neighborhood, because the lot itself is only 50 feet with a driveway. If you subtract a driveway, you could maybe put two cars in front of it. When it goes through the administrative plan review, do you, does the staff ensure that there is enough parking for the assumed number of cars that a normal household has in this day and time?
Staff will certainly have to assess the application, make sure it meets the zoning requirements. The zoning requirements that were adopted are one parking space per unit as a minimum. So we'll have to have that as an absolute minimum on site. What we've heard, we haven't had the opportunity to have a lot of new development under our mixed-use zoning, but when we did, the task force that included developers and designers, as we were drafting the code, the approach we chose to take with their input was to keep the minimums low and let the market decide. So if somebody feels that, for example, these are going to be for sale units, and they need two parking spaces per unit, and they can fit that, they could do that, but the zoning would only require one per unit.
Okay. And please understand, I'm all for development. I'm good where development makes sense. So for drainage on this property, you mentioned drainage. Is there enough, I didn't see any slope, so is there any concern about having either a retention area or a detention area on this lot, or...
So, yeah, when I was bringing up the stormwater, that was mainly in relation to a commercial use, because that's when those standards apply. Our Public Works engineers have looked at the lot, and we would not require drainage, we don't for any development if you're a single or two-family home.
Okay.
So for a two-family home, that would not be required. For multifamily, which we use as a term to describe three or more, so for two units, we would just say a duplex or two-family, but for multifamily, it would be required. And there would not be room on the lot, obviously, to fit that in. If you design it appropriately and you want to pay the money, because it is at quite an additional cost, you could put your detention area underground. A lot, that happens a lot of urban infill. So theoretically, that would be an option, but it's probably more likely that it'd end up being a two-family where you don't have to allocate room for stormwater.
Okay. And then, could you do me a favor and go back to the picture of the lot, looking at it from the street, kind of looking southwest? Perfect. I just want to clarify for everybody here that the lot line is essentially where the curb is in the commercial property. So the trees, so that area where the trees are, is that part of the lot, that we're...
That is a good question. Let me look at the aerial to see better. I'm not sure, because we don't have any documents that actually have the surveyed property line on top of an aerial.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if they actually fall right on the property line, or...
Or they could be part of the, the commercial to the, to the north?
They could be.
Okay. And I'll ask the applicant. I'm just trying to understand. Okay. Thank you.
And look, sorry, in looking at this aerial, which is zoomed in a little bit more, it does appear that, I know nobody in the audience can see this, but maybe the commissioners can, there's, it looks like those trees might be...
Part of the commercial.
The plantings right there, which would be on the commercial lot.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Matthews, any questions for staff? Commissioner Weaver, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I just, Sarah, if you could explain a little bit more on why this, why MUN versus R2? Because it seems like if, if commercial really isn't a viable option.
Yeah, it's a great question. I think the main reason why is what Commissioner Brinkman kind of already hit on, which is the minimum lot size in the R2 Zone District is 12,500 square feet. So you wouldn't be able to do a two-family home in that zone district. What we kind of ran, ran into, we were speaking with the applicant about what their intent is, is we don't have a great, a great zone district out there that's kind of fits a more urban, smaller lot development that might have that density of like a two-family home or townhomes. So the MUN was the best fit we had in the sense that it allows you to do that on a smaller lot. And we, like I mentioned in the presentation, felt comfortable that even though it does theoretically allow for commercial, you just really can't fit that kind of use on this small of a lot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Butnam, any questions for staff?
No, Ann stole my question, so I'm in good shape. Thanks.
I just have a clarifying question. So it sounds like the, the mixed-use end district has no minimum lot size. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then, for the R3 lots, which are just south of this, I know it's currently there. It's not necessarily an indicator of what may be in the future. What would be the maximum height allowed in R3 currently?
35 feet.
35 feet as well. Okay. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. At this time, is the applicant here tonight? If you want to come forward, and please state your name and address for the record, and then any additional items that you would like to present.
My name is Sen Paul Mata. My address is 11773 Gray Street, Westminster, Colorado, 80020. Currently, I have nothing to add, sir. Pretty much mentioned and covered everything that's needed. We'll stay with my design firm, we'll stay within the rules and regulations of the City of Wheat Ridge. We want to build and work with the City of Wheat Ridge to build better future and also work with Wheat Ridge 2020 to build 38th Corridor.
Thank you. If you just want to wait there for a moment, we'll see if there's any questions for you, okay? Sharon, no questions? Commissioner Duran? Commissioner Brinkman?
Hi. So when you sat through the neighborhood meeting, were you surprised by any of the comments or questions?
I was surprised. I thought we might have a little bit more of a struggle, but when I explained what my plans were, it made sense for the neighborhood. I'm not going to make anything obnoxious out of the neighborhood. I want to be a part of the neighborhood and build the city up.
And when you purchased the property, you were aware of some of the constraints of the square foot, the size, limitations of the lot?
I was not. I saw potential more likely than the rules and regulations, because I'll stay within the box, but I just, I was just driving by the City of Wheat Ridge, and my grandfather lives here, and I just thought, hey, you know, why not come closer to him? He's getting a little older, so, and I bought the land, I was thinking building a single-family unit, but since I met this City of Wheat Ridge 2020, and they were talking to me about certain things, and it kind of fit within what my views and visions are for the future of the area.
So are you, you don't have to commit, you're not on record here, but are you looking at more of these as for-sale or lease?
Right now, I'm currently selling my house, so I'm debating, I wonder if we live within the area.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Matthews, no questions? Commissioner Weaver? Commissioner Buckman? Okay. I don't think any further questions at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will open up the hearing for anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak either in favor or in opposition to this request. Anyone up there interested? Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name's Tom Lix, L-I-X. I live at 3745 Chase Street, which is just a block over from where this is taking, planned to be taking place. Several years ago, behind the veterinarian shop that's on 38th, they put in a mixed-use zoning there, which was a very nice residential house, okay? And shortly after that, the residential house sold, and they came in, cut down most of the trees, poured cement in the yard, and made it into a business. And that was mixed-use, as I understand it, okay? And it's been kind of in and out. My point is, is that we're trying to protect our neighborhoods over there. I'm a big fan of 38th Avenue redevelopment and the ridge at 38th Avenue, but I've been to a number of those meetings, and my main concern is that we don't keep pushing everything over into the residential area, jamming it so full, and it deteriorates the value of the residential areas, and it truly does. So I'd ask you to consider that, because when I moved into this old house I bought 15 years ago, the real estate lady said, "This is a real little pocket of prosperity here." And it was. But we're seeing this zoning creep, okay? That they're supposed to put barriers in between our neighborhood and the 38th, and none of that's happening, okay? They said they were going to do that. So I'm speaking for myself, but I'm also speaking for the people that live over there, because it just takes the neighborhood out. I'm a big fan of 38th. There's a lot of properties on 38th that could be redeveloped, and so don't misunderstand, I'm not backwards, but we have a problem we're fighting over there, and I'm representing five of my neighbors, and we would like you to consider that we are trying to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood and not jam it all up and mess it all up even further. And there's already been some of that over on Chase, okay? And that's my point. I can't make decisions for you, but I can sure give you the viewpoint of where we are, where we sit, and the problems that we have, and it does deteriorate the value of the properties when squarely things happen in the area, and that's what we're living with right now. And I reiterate, I'm a big fan of the ridge at 38th. I'm just not a real big fan of the ridge at 37th, okay? So I've asked you to keep that in mind, that's all I had to say.
Thank you so much for coming in tonight. Let's see, I have a Wilhite, a Wilkite?
Yes.
Would you like to come forward and speak, or you just want to listen?
I just want to listen.
Okay. Thank you. I have a Hammond's? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward, or are you just here to listen as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have a Montoya? Yes, sir.
I'd like to come up.
Okay, please do.
Can you just read that?
Oh, sure. As you come forward, I had a request from Commissioner Brinkman to read the address of the other folks who were here to listen. Wilhite was at 3740 Benton Street, and then Hammond's at 3755 Benton Street. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is John Montoya, and that's my sister at 3755.
Okay.
And we're right next door to the lot that we're speaking about. And this gentleman, he came up to us and explained what he wants to do there. He wants to build a, he didn't tell you, but he wants to build a single-family thing, and he has a consulting business, and he wants to put his consulting business in the house, which we said was fine with us. I mean, he seems to be a, you know, straight-up guy, so as far as we're concerned, we approve it.
Okay.
You know, we have no, you know, he's got a business here, he's got one in San Francisco, and he said he's going to be here sometimes, and sometimes he's not, so, you know, it's not going to bother us. It's been, we've lived there 42 years already in that double, so we approve it.
And your address, please, sir?
3755.
Benton Street, right. Thank you so much. Let's see, we have a Lee Ray, is that right?
That's my sister.
Oh, okay. Okay. And I have an address of 3765 Benton for her. Okay.
She has a duplex.
Very good. Thank you. Next, Ms. Fisher, do you want to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Britta Fisher, F-I-S-H-E-R, and I'm the executive director of Wheat Ridge 2020, which was referenced earlier. As one of the previous speakers mentioned, we are big fans of 38th Avenue and ridge at 38, and we're specifically very supportive of mixed-use zoning. And for the reasons that staff have already outlined, we feel that expanding that zone district to this small parcel makes sense with the adjacent uses. I think it plans for the future and makes use of a very small parcel in a smart way for urban infill, which is about the only thing you can do on such a small parcel. I would also say, I'm also a resident on Benton Street, just a little bit further south, and I'm just very encouraged to see vacant land being attractive for investment and development again, and I believe that the zoning district really helps to attract that, and we're happy to work with anybody who is looking to do that in the city, and we're very happy to see that this parcel could potentially be rezoned mixed-use neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in. With that, that's all I have for this particular case. I have one more person signed up for the Livewell presentation, but would anyone else in the audience like to come forward and speak either in favor or in opposition to this request? Are there any other questions at this time for either the applicant or staff as a part of this application? So seeing none, I will close the public hearing on this particular case and welcome any discussion among the commissioners. Commissioner Brinkman?
So I live in an R2 piece of property that's 75 feet wide and much deeper than this property, and 75 feet is reasonably wide, 50 feet is very narrow. I can't be angry at the applicant, because the applicant isn't the person that subdivided the property back in 2007 and left this tiny little chunk, which at the time, we all questioned whether there was going to be a house on it after we heard the case. I'm, I am in favor of this. I'm a little concerned about the parking on the street. If you looked, if, when I went to visit the property, and if you look at the pictures, the neighbors are doing a good job of not parking on the street, but are parking on their property, and so I'm concerned if this does go to two-family, even though we only allow one parking spot per family, that there may be some cars parked on the property, or parked on the street where there currently are not. But because there's no other options, viable options, I'm in favor of this property, and I wish the applicant well.
Thank you for those comments. Any other discussion among the commissioners? Okay. Yes, Commissioner Duran?
Did we establish with the property owner, you were asking about the property line there by the trees, is that where it is? Do you know? The property owner? Autozone? Okay, so that's where it cuts off.
The tree is over our parking lane, but we would not destroy the tree.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Just for clarification, for those that are in the audience and those that are watching, the trees, it seems are property of the Autozone property and not this that lot, so thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Buckman?
I just had one, a quick question for Sarah that I overlooked. Sarah, just in reference to the parking, the on-street parking, isn't there, I seem to recall there were some standards when we talk about residential development for parking, on-street parking availability per unit, and am I just imagining that? Does anyone remember that?
I'm not sure what you might be referring to, the, just to clarify, the mixed-use code does include language that if on-street parking is allowed, you can't, you can use that towards your minimum parking standards.
Okay.
But in this case, because the street's so narrow, we would require them to meet the minimum, again, that I had stated earlier, the minimum of the one parking space per unit.
Okay. Yeah, like Commissioner Brinkman, I have some concerns about adequate parking, but it is a challenging space, and I would love to see that space put to good use, so I'll be supporting, supporting this request and definitely hope something good comes of it, so that's all.
Thank you for those comments. Any other discussion among commissioners? Commissioner Ollm?
I just have a quick comment. I think it's going to take some creative design, and I see it as a possibility. I'm in support of it.
Anyone else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion on this particular case.
I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-12-09, a quest for approval of a zone change from planned residential development, PRD, to mixed-use neighborhood, MUN for property located at 3775 Benton Street for the following reasons. One, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan. Two, the proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and provides a reasonable transition between a commercial corridor and multifamily zoning to the south. Three, the proposed zone change will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. Four, the subject property is currently underutilized. The zone change may increase the likelihood of the site developing in a way that supports the city's goals for 38th Avenue and that provides a transition between the existing commercial and residential uses.
You have a motion on the floor. Any second on that?
I second.
First and second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will call for a vote.
All in favor.
So, so Planning Commission recommends approval. Obviously, this case still has to go before City Council. Does staff know when this is scheduled yet for City Council?
Yes, it's January 14th.
January 14th, 2013. So all of you, all that attended, either in favor or opposition, we certainly welcome you to come to the City Council hearing again in January, and City Council will also welcome your comments then, okay? Thank you very much for your attendance tonight on that. And with that, we will, we have one study session item tonight, so we will move into that. We have a presentation from Livewell Wheat Ridge, and I don't know if, is staff going to introduce, or are we going to start right with Livewell?
Do, I think they can just, we have Molly Hansen, the coordinator for Livewell Wheat Ridge, and Ted Hyde, who's the planning consultant for Livewell Wheat Ridge, will be giving the presentation.
And I was just informed to, that we'll turn off the television for the public for this portion of the study session, so thank you so much. And with that, Molly, you are good to go.